Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I call to order the regular meeting of the Tracy City Council at 6:30 PM, Monday, August 12, 2019. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the federal liberty of speech, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing for the invocation.
I'd just like to start this day with prayer. Let's pray. Almighty God, thank you for this city. We thank you for the people who live here and everyone who calls this place home. We thank you for the people who serve this city. We pray that everyone here tonight would rely on wisdom, that they would rely on you. And we pray that you would bring them patience and faithfulness and in all ways that you would bless, just bless the things that they have to talk about. Give them clarity, give them focus. We pray, Lord, that tonight, good things would be done and that everything that would be done would glorify the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. Okay. First item is the approval of the minutes. Did everybody have a chance to wrestle your way through the minutes? I will take that as a yes.
I make a motion to approve them.
First and second, any discussion or corrections? Anybody find any errors? Good job. Let's move to vote, please.
Dave Teigs.
Aye.
Jerry Jones.
Aye.
Kootel.
Aye.
Tony Peterson.
Aye.
Mayor Demers.
Aye. The ayes have it. The minutes are approved. Next is the agenda. Do we have some changes, it looks like?
All right, Mayor, we have under resolutions, 12F for the work change order, 11 for Phase 1, and then H, 12H would be the resolution for payment for Dunick for Phase 1. They found some corrections that need to be made, so we're going to table that to the next meeting. Is that right with you?
Both to our table.
Yep.
Both of them?
Yep. F and H, under 12.
Does anybody have a problem with that?
Oh, get it right.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Any further discussion? Smooth vote.
Dave Teigs.
Aye.
Jerry Jones.
Aye.
Kootel.
Aye.
Tony Peterson.
Aye.
Mayor Demers.
Aye. The agenda is approved as amended. And identify any conflicts of interest this evening for any items on the agenda. We have item 11E. Mr. Peterson, that applies directly.
I've already been sanctioned on that, so...
That was actually Jeff Solomon's. So, if you want to recuse, that would be...
On 11E?
11E.
When you're talking about me, you want me to recuse?
Yes. You can't sit in self-judgment. It would only recuse your actions.
It does not impugn you from defending yourself as a citizen. It just would recuse you from motions or...
I had no intention to act either way.
So, can I take that as a recusal, then?
I guess, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Any other conflicts of interest? All right, move on to public comment. Anybody from the public have a comment? If so, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Okay. My name is Rosemary Martin. I'm from Tracy, and I reviewed the agenda in minutes, and I would like to add it to A statement I'm going to give to the council members, if you could hand that to them. You can include this time or here at a separate time. There we go. I also believe in this legal action that Councilman Peterson acted of his own volition by using information provided to the EDA Board by Jamie Madison for the purpose of obtaining an EDA loan for the Asian market building. Councilman Peterson made a sworn oath to follow the city code when he took office in January of 2017. City Code 2.10 subdivision 2 specifically states councilperson's duties shall be performed without exception by the council as a whole. Councilman Peterson is held to that standard at all levels of city government. Councilman Peterson used the information provided to the EDA Board by Jamie Madison for the sole purpose of obtaining an EDA loan without the Board's knowledge, also violating the Fair Credit Reporting Act by distributing that same information to another EDA Board member. I'm requesting that this is also be included in Agenda Item 11E or addressed at a future time. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Larson.
Thank you. I have some updates on the various phases of the infrastructure improvement projects. I know the change order number, if you know what it was now, but for Phase 1 and the final payment were tabled. There are minor discrepancies. I've been out of the office. Andy Boyle, if you guys know, emailed me about it this morning, so let's just table this, but there's some minor discrepancies that just want to get straightened out before we bring it to council. But on that project, that final change order would be a quantity reconciliation. So, when we go into these street reconstruction projects, they're on unit price contracts, so there's X number of dollars per foot of sewer, X number of dollars per foot of curb, and so forth. Everything's broken out by the unit and estimated quantities. And at the end of these projects, we do a final change order that reconciles quantities based on what was actually constructed. So, our guys in the field are measuring things, and that's how they're paid throughout the project. And at the end, it just adjusts the contract amount to match what was actually built. So, it's, I'm not sure how much the discrepancies add up to, but my understanding, they're pretty minor. The magnitude of that change order is going to be about $100,000 to the good, so contract price would be $100,000 less. It would be a D-Dock on that, and then the final payment would be releasing the remainder of the retainage for the project. So, it would really be closing that project out. Also, on Phase 1, there's an amendment to the owner-engineer agreement, which covers some of the additional services that we are involved with as far as coordinating with property owners on getting additional easements and getting the flowable fill situation figured out. These were the pipes under houses that we weren't able to fill by sand, so we had to... There's some additional work there to get a solution there, which was successful. So, owner-engineer agreement number 1, and these are already reviewed and concurred upon by Rural Development. Be for $22,328.50. So, that's all on Phase 1. Phase 2, if you recall, be a year and a half ago, two years ago, when it first started, they encountered additional topsoil than what the soil boring showed. So, we established a change order and a unit price for that. That was under Change Order 1. And there was an estimate, we dug some test holes, the contractor dug some test holes, and tried to come up with a good estimate of how much more we anticipated encountering on the project. And then, at the end of the project here, our final measurements resulted in an additional $80,000, $80,482.80 change order for the contractor. That'd be Change Order Number 6. And again, Rural Development has reviewed and approved of this. I mean, so far in that project, we're well within our 5% contingency, so $80,000 is, I'm not saying it's not a lot, it's a lot of money, but it's a $5 million job, so you kind of anticipate a little contingency on any project. And then, for change order, for Phase 2, there's also an owner-engineer amendment for that. Essentially, with the extension, the project took an additional year, and it's not like the contractor wasn't able to work for a year, it's just when they were working, it was a lot less productive. So, we still had a guy out there. Every day, the contractor was out there. So, that resulted in some additional services that weren't in the original budget, and that total amount is $80,217. So, that'd be owner-engineer agreement number 2, and that's for Phase 2. And then, finally, Change Order Number 1 for Phase 3A would be the sidewalk. We switched sides of the street, a couple of blocks. Beyond Hollid Street between Center and Second, was moved from the south side of the road to the north side. So, again, I was talking about the unit prices. This is the estimated quantity of sidewalk went up and results in a total addition of $4,470.65. And essentially, by going to the other side of the road, some additional head ramps were required, pedestrian ramps. By being on the other side of the road, you kind of need one to line up with one on the other side of the street, so that's where that additional cost came from there. So, those are the, I guess, five items on the three different phases that we have going right now. Phase 1 will be wrapped up. I guess the next meeting will formalize that change order and final payment that we tabled.
How are the ponds doing?
Good. They passed the water balance test. There are a few administrative things with MPCA, some boxes we have to check now that they're substantially complete, but they should be able to receive wastewater within a couple of weeks here. So, they look good.
When are we starting this fall?
Last I heard was September. Dunick plans to mobilize. I don't, they won't get a ton done this year, so they're going to have to hit it hard next year, but...
They know where they're starting and where they're going to go, or what are they planning on trying to do?
Third, and I believe it's Harvey are the two, I think like I've talked about before, they pretty much have to start at the downstream end.
Yep.
And then, once they get a block or two in, they can start branching off with more crews. But there are two different spots on this project they can start from, so hopefully they'll bring multiple crews right away. And then, once they can get to a side street to branch off, they'll bring a third, fourth, maybe more. We'll see. So, it's kind of a resource availability issue for them right now, but...
You mentioned where we couldn't fill in with sand, the pipes that...
Yeah, that was Change Order Number 10 for Phase 1. And that was, the change order was approved, and then they were able to do the work. So, if you recall, there were existing storm and sanitary lines that went under houses, and there were three of those that they weren't able to blow full of sand, either just they, there's kind of a pressure dead end, and it wasn't taking sand, or what they do actually is they blow air in first before they start pumping the sand and to see where air is coming out. It was just taking air and taking air, but there was no sign of it anywhere, so they didn't know where it was going. And before you just start sending sand, you want to make sure it's not going to go in someone's basement or something. So, they ended up switching to flowable fill, which is just a very liquid concrete grout mix that's able to flow without pressure, just basically by gravity, and fill up that space, and it was monitored very closely, the elevation of it, before they cut it off. So, we knew it was still below basements and so forth. So, that's what... There are other pipes that were successfully filled with sand, but there were three out of, I want to say, seven or eight that weren't able to take the sand.
And that's been successful on all three?
Yeah. Yep.
Anybody got any questions?
What would that be, Shane? It would be the resolutions under 12E-G would be the two change orders?
You need those done before you go?
If possible. I mean, yeah.
We can do those now. Anybody got a problem with that?
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-50.
Second. First and second, any discussion? Go to vote.
Dave Teigs.
Aye.
Jerry Jones.
Aye.
Kootel.
Aye.
Tony Peterson.
Aye.
Mayor Demers.
Aye. Resolution 2019-50, approving work change order number 1 on Phase 3A infrastructure improvements. Passes.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-52.
Second. Any discussion? Go to vote.
Dave Teigs.
Aye.
Jerry Jones.
Aye.
Kootel.
Aye.
Tony Peterson.
Aye.
Mayor Demers.
Aye. Resolution 2019-52, approve work change order 6, Phase 2. A proposed stabilization pond system is approved.
Thank you.
Anything further?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tracy, Phases 1 and 2, infrastructure loan closures.
Hey, I've here, this is kind of one of the, part of the process with USDA. We close on the loan, and then that loan would pay our interim bond, 2016C and 2017A, and then it'll be the, that would be the permanent 40-year loan for the infrastructure improvements from the USDA for Phase 1 and 2.
Okay, so do you need a motion to close those? Or have they already been?
I believe we'll need a motion for that.
We don't have a resolution prepared.
I don't see one.
So, can we make a motion to close them and then have the resolution at the next meeting?
When does that have to be completed by Shane?
I'm not sure. It's something Chris initiated. I'm just trying to follow up with it. I can ask. I don't see any resolutions attached to it.
There's no deadline on the closing date?
That I'm not sure. This is something Jeff Van Beerin needed on the agenda, I think, to check the box, but...
Wasn't that what was signed?
Maybe we can come back to this and maybe try to find out here in the meantime.
Okay, we'll table that till...
Will we make the motion for the loan closure, and then if you find out we need to do a resolution, we'll have to do it at a later date, but if they just need a motion...
You don't owe a dollar a month. Do you want to just make a blanket?
Yeah, we'll table this till later on in the meeting, and then...
That's Chris Knowles.
I just looked up an email real quick from Jeff, and the soft closing is going to be on September 9th, but the actual closing date will be September 13th.
We can do a resolution on that by next meeting.
I think so, yeah.
All right, let's table that till the next meeting.
Table it till the next meeting.
Yep.
Good to have him around. Now he's leaving, you see. Thanks, Chris.
Okay, so Boxcar Days, Tracy Chamber, on sale license, softball field, and beer tent. This is kind of a traditional...
Yeah, this is our annual license for the Boxcar. For the beer tent and softball field, for them to sell the beer in those two locations.
Okay.
Annual license, or something they apply for annually, I guess, for the event.
Make a motion to approve license request.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? Let's go to vote.
Dave Teigs.
Aye.
Jerry Jones.
Aye.
Kootel.
Aye.
Tony Peterson.
Aye.
Mayor Demers.
Aye. Chamber on sale license, softball field, and beer tent, it's approved. Street dance and carnival license.
That's the same thing. It's an annual license. They get to have the carnival downtown for Boxcar Days and also the Saturday street dance license.
Are all these licenses going to the same, to Chamber?
Yes.
We got the request for street closure and admission of carnival and use of parking lot as well. Can we do those all in one?
I don't see a reason why you couldn't.
I do have a question about, you know, with the use of the, are they talking about the use of the parking lot just next to the liquor store?
The beer tent.
Okay, I guess my question is, is, you know, they have the people that come with the carnival parking their campers and everything, and there is a problem with electricity not being part of the bill or whatever last time. Do we know if that's been addressed for this year? So, we're not, I mean, because that was quite a hefty.
That was, Chamber needs to take care of that.
Yeah, that's Chamber business.
Okay.
They wanted us to pay it between them and the...
Yeah, but they just need to get that settled up before it's over.
And then, on this too, they're requesting with these license and dance fees, they're requesting us to waive the fees?
No.
No, okay.
I'll make the motion to approve the license for the street dance and the carnival license in this, although, because that's a license, these others aren't licensed. I'll just stay with that as my motion.
Second.
First and second, any further discussion? Let's go to vote.
Dave Teigs.
Aye.
Jerry Jones.
Aye.
Kootel.
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Demers.
Aye. Street dance carnival license is approved.
Make a motion to approve the request for street closure and the use of the parking lot and any vehicles they need for the parade.
Second. First and second, discussion? Let's go to vote.
Dave Teigs.
Aye.
Jerry Jones.
Aye.
Kootel.
Aye.
Tony Peterson.
Aye.
Mayor Demers.
Aye. Request for street closure, admission of carnival, use of parking lot, use of vehicles, approved. Lift pathways grant program.
Include it in your packet. There's a memo, so we got the cost to partition that office off to keep our stuff separate from the areas needed for this, potentially for this flight simulator. I did check with M&amp;O, grants will not cover this because it's not a public area, so it would have to be 100% city-funded. There would be no M&amp;O grant available to make the changes.
I see, Dave Auger, Tracy, those pictures that I handed out this evening, you could subdivide, right off the back of that counter, you can subdivide, you could enclose that AWAS, and then the other picture is just clean up the office. I don't see why we have to have a wall.
So, you're saying the operator would be on the other side of this window?
Excuse me? You had the operator, yeah.
The operator would be on the other side of that window.
The other side of that window is actually the main lobby for...
The main lobby. So...
Isn't it because the school is saying it has to be in a secured locked room?
Right, so we're going to make a petition that where your finger is right there, all the way up to the ceiling, and put a door in there.
But either way, that's a room.
Yeah, I mean, if you have to put up a wall with a door, I mean...
It's just not a wall, it's just enclosure.
Should we actually have equipment?
So, where you're saying that $5,000 is the proposal of kind of what he's saying?
No.
You got to have walls that have doors. I mean...
You can build a, what I'm saying is you can put an enclosure around that where the countertopping is and go all the way to the ceiling with the enclosure. It wouldn't be that cost that much to do that.
Because then it's not secure.
You can put a lock on it.
I think he's saying reduce the size of the room.
Reduce the size, yeah.
Which is what the plan was.
Well, they're supposed to bring back a floor plan as to what we're...
I haven't seen anything on this.
Right.
I think we need to, I think we need to do it, I think we need to exploit that asset out there.
And also, go ahead.
Do it at the most cost-effective point, too.
Also, with the crease, area students, we yielded $1,200 in June and $1,700 of fuel in the last two months, so, for the airport sales.
So, is there any money in the airport's budget? That's not the grant money, I understand, that M&amp;O won't pay for it, but is there any other money in that budget that we could...
Nothing budgeted.
Nothing budgeted, but they have a fund that would require us to do a resolution using some of that money on unfunded expenditure in order to get this done.
Because then, for the added revenue that we're getting from the additional gas we're selling, because that goes into the airport fund, we could offset then this $5,000 with that revenue.
I don't think you're going to need $5,000, Jerry.
Well, I mean, that's the quote right now we're looking at, or the price.
That's all we have to go on, right?
Okay.
You have something less?
I'm done.
Does this equipment require any specialty, like...
That's what's already out there.
Humidity or, huh?
That's the AWAS system.
AWAS.
Okay, so it doesn't require temperature or humidity requirements?
It just needs to be secure so it doesn't, her legs won't get damaged.
In the past, the computers have been stolen out there for the AWAS system, which is why it's in a locked room now.
Okay.
We'd like it to remain in a locked room. So, it's city employee access.
$5,000 seems a little steep for a little closet.
Yeah, but we also have the other stuff that's in the room for the fly-in that would need to be housed, but Mr. Auger actually told me today that it needs to go to City Hall, and we store it down here, but that isn't, you know, that's, it's the only fundraiser the airport really has, and I don't see any reason why everybody should work harder to move all that stuff, all the volunteer work every year that's put into that fly-in, to have to run across town to get cups and plates and everything when we have the facilities on the grounds that are able to house that.
I was going to mention that the stuff on the left from the picture, that can stay. That's all the fly-in stuff. That stuff can stay.
There's no reason that couldn't be stored with whatever partitions the AWAS system requires, right?
Can we get it under $5,000? I mean, that's...
To keep it the same as current fee, that's going to be pretty close to what it's going to be. Because honestly, with everything going on right now, we'd have to hire it all out.
What's our offset possibilities? Just increased fuel sales?
Well, we've got that... Well, you've got that, you've also got the more exposure to the aviation thing for the youth, which is gonna drive more people out to that airport and using it, it helps with our funding. It'll help us keep our tentile numbers under the, on the, in the hangars in order to keep our, our funding from the FAA for the annual, that $150,000 a year. It's a under-exploited economic asset, and anytime we can do something to expand the use out there, we need to do that. I mean, it's...
Yeah, I realize...
We've got one of the finest airports in this section of the state.
It's a, it's an investment.
Yeah.
What timeframe are you looking at wanting to do it?
I'd like to get in there by September.
Not gonna happen. Not a chance.
What's a more realistic time?
December? You don't see a contract out there that can get anything done within three months right now. With us currently short and short administrator, not gonna happen. We got infrastructure to put in, we don't have time to do it either.
What kind of impact does that have on you, Dave?
Well, we won't be able to do any similar, you know, Mr. Mayor.
Well, you can still do it at the school. You're just gonna stay status quo for three, four months versus if it was totally denied, that's where it would stay. We're just saying you might need to give a little bit on the time because of manpower.
There will, um, there will have to be an agreement, whoever party, whatever party's responsible for this equipment to be housed in our facility also, so it has to be drafted up and approved by the council, too.
Okay, and what party is responsible for that, Dave? Who's responsible for this equipment?
Either Lift Grant, it's Lift Grant people.
If you like, the school.
I don't know if it's the school owns or if it's Lift that owns it, or...
The Lift Grant.
Lift owns it.
User be responsible for the safety and...
Safety.
Security of the equipment is what I mean. Your organization or your company that's gonna be responsible for it.
So who draws that up? Is that something we get from...
Matt draws.
Matt would draw that up. And that, too, is gonna carry a cost. So...
It doesn't, based on the conversation with Chad Anderson, they don't want any financial responsibility with...
The school doesn't.
With funding the change of location.
But they're gonna benefit the most from it, yeah?
What do you mean? He has agreed to that.
Yeah, for no cost.
For no cost.
Yeah.
So to write up the contract, I was just questioning if it would be the school could pay for that versus us paying for that.
So the request should be from Lift, then, to enter an agreement for the relocation of the equipment.
Well, they could, I've seen that, they presented that at the last meeting to do it, they were in favor of it.
Yeah.
And they were tasked to come back with some type of an agreement on how they were gonna handle it, and that hasn't been happened yet, but... I'd... Just to get things moving forward, I would make a motion to remodel that room as necessary not to exceed $5,000. Draw up the appropriate resolution to bring it to the next meeting. And then, beans, it's gonna be such a time before it gets finished, we'd be able to handle looking at the contract. I think Lift could come up with whatever, however they wanna do the legalese on that contract and between the city and Lift is what it's gonna be sold.
Tony, let me get ahold of the school, see if they wanna help with maybe a little construction on that.
Certainly ask them, they don't know if they would...
Could it maybe be like a project for them?
Yeah.
And so if Lift comes up with the agreement, we can have Matt just review it?
Yep.
That would be a lot more inexpensive as far as the agreement goes, if Matt just reviews it. So...
Jeff said he'll get in touch with them.
I'll second your motion.
I have a first and a second, is there any further discussion? Let's go to vote.
Dave Teigs.
Aye.
Jerry Shones.
Aye.
Kootel.
Aye.
Tony Peterson.
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers.
Aye.
Thank you.
The Lift Pathways Grant Program, the, um, remodeling of the space for the SIM is approved, not to exceed $5,000. Approval of plumber's license, J.D. Plumbing and Heating?
Make a motion to approve the license, providing all the fees have been paid, the paperwork's filled out.
Second.
What is this pertaining to?
Each plumber's, uh, to have a license in order...
Oh, this is the, okay, got it. First and second, any further discussion? Go to, uh, vote.
Dave Teigs.
Aye.
Jerry Shones.
Aye.
Kootel.
Aye.
Tony Peterson. Mayor Dimmers.
Aye, approval of plumber's license, J.D. Plumbing and Heating. Official City of Tracy email addresses.
So I believe this has been, Chris had sent this out last week, um, for the Data Practices Law, Chapter 13 Minnesota Statute, um, based on the League of Minnesota Cities, I believe, is what is driving this, it's recommended that they adopt the following email addresses for official emails for city, city business moving forward. And we got, um, I don't know if you want me to read these off, or...
I believe it's first letter initial and last name.
I can read them, so, uh, Mayor Dimmers is Adimmers@tracymn.org. Councilmember Peterson is T Peterson@tracymn.org. Councilmember Tau, um, it's K Tau@tracymn.org. Councilmember Shones is J Shones@tracymn.org. And Councilmember Teigs is D Teigs@tracymn.org. If this is a resolution or... It just needs an approval.
And there's, there's other, of the staff is the same thing, right? It follows the same naming convention?
Yeah, and it's, yeah, all the city staff are the same theme, I guess.
Are those gonna be included on our webpage then?
Got a note.
Or are they already there?
Once they're approved, then, yeah.
Okay. Alright.
I'd make a motion to approve the, the new email addresses.
Second.
First and second, any further discussion or questions?
Uh, how much does that cost us additionally through the year?
Not very much. I know, um, we're going through, uh, computers and beyond now, uh, with a different platform. And I wanna say it was like five bucks a year for email address, you know? It used to be fifty.
It was nominal, it was very nominal, yeah.
Yeah.
It's gotten palatable.
Don't quote me on that, I can find out for sure.
No, that's, I just wanted to make sure we were looking at it, so, budget time coming up, realizing it's an expense.
Okay. Any other comments? First, second, uh, let's roll the vote.
Dave Teigs.
Aye.
Jerry Shones.
Aye.
Kootel.
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers.
Aye. Official City Tracy email addresses passes. Jeff Carpenter, EDA Director, accept Mark Seeger's resignation and discuss openings on the EDA Board.
Mayor, the EDA Board accepted Mark Seeger's resignation that through a past meeting last week, and I just wanted to bring it to the city council because I wanted you to be aware of it because it'll, you'll be advertising for his seat on the EDA Board, so we'll advertise that, not only on the TV role, but then, I believe, Diane, don't we do that in the newspaper also?
Yes.
We'll do that in the newspaper, then I'll get it put onto the, uh, onto the website as an opening also. I don't know if you want to approve that one along with, going along with, uh, with Jeff Solomon's seat at the same time, if you want to approve both of those, so I can get... And then I will, in two weeks, bring to you hopefully some names or some people here, I don't... I'll start looking, though.
Just, uh, on further inspection, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty sure what the answer's gonna be, but I, the way I read this, he's only signing his seat as co-chair. The way he wrote this, he's not signing it as...
I can get a new one if you'd like.
Well, no, I just, so, I, I don't wanna lock him up, he's got a chance to change his mind or not. I don't know if he will or not, so...
No, no.
Okay.
Oh, yes. So can we get, uh, I just need approval to search for two new members on the EDA Board, that's what I'm looking for.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Do we need to approve the resolution first, or can we go ahead and do this? Is it important that it goes in any order?
Because he's, Jeff's already been approved.
Okay, I just, I, yeah, just for procedural. Okay, we have a first, second, any other discussion?
Jerry, along with that, did you want to amend your motion to accept his resignation? And advertise?
Oh, yes, that I accept his resignation and then approve to advertise the two openings on the EDA Board.
Second, discussions. Vote.
Teigs.
Aye.
Shones.
Aye.
Tau.
Aye.
Peterson.
Mayor Dimmers.
Aye, so motion to accept Mark Seeger's resignation and advertise two EDA Board seats is approved. City vehicles?
Alright, so, we're gonna potentially like to move some of the vehicles around that currently use. I'd like to add one more, um, onto this list. So right now we have a 1999 Ford Explorer at the airport. It's in pretty tough shape, um, body-wise, so we'd like to put that on a future auction with the other vehicles that we're currently sitting on right now. Move the 2002 Ford Van as the airport loaner. We have to make some repairs to the windows and that. Got the AC running now, so I think we can get that going good, um, for that use. And then, uh, the 2013 Ford Taurus, it used to be the PD squad, um, that is running, uh, very well now. Like to put that into the, as the office vehicle. Being that's, uh, newer and a little more reliable. And then, um, due to the age of our '79 Ford flatbed, um, it's just getting pretty tough with the rust and everything on that, all the door seals and window seals are tired on it. We, I'd like to request we take the old 1114, um, grass rig, which had been the old one, and put that into the fleet to replace the old flatbed Ford. We looked through that, it's probably the only one that's really salvageable, um, from the flood vehicles. We did check with, um, League of Minnesota Cities, they do not want the vehicle, they don't care what we do with the vehicle, and beans, it's in decent shape yet, it might be a good, you know, it's kind of a free vehicle, more or less, uh, considering what we're gonna get for value on an auction, means it was a flood vehicle. That's a request I'd like to make.
What are you doing with the old '79 flatbed?
We would move that to the action with the owner.
But I figured.
Oh, my only question, I, it's a good plan, but, um, the Taurus, if they, if the PD sold it, the money would go back in the PD's Equipment Replacement Fund? So when we sell those, the Explorer or whatever, is that money gonna go in there or can you put it in your fund?
I don't know what fund it usually goes in, but, I mean, it can go there.
I, I just don't wanna...
Explorer was a police vehicle, so...
Yeah, that's something I don't wanna...
We don't wanna short the police department.
Yeah. Well, I don't know what its value is, but...
Yeah, whatever you get, it's better than...
It's got 12,000 hours on it, I think, so... I guess it's got a lot of runtime on it, but it's still, structurally, it's a good... A lot better the body-wise than the, than the van is, but if you're sitting outside all the time, you know, the van would be good. Hurt us a car out there, so...
Is there any wisdom in, um, selling the Taurus because it, it has some value to it still? And then maybe using the proceeds from that? Of course, we'd have to go back to the police fund, but, um, somehow maybe picking up maybe a less valuable vehicle and...
Usually, police vehicles aren't worth much.
You don't get much market value out of them.
So maybe two, three thousand is all you're gonna get out of it, so...
Okay, I just wanted to ask a question, you know, and, and that's...
You get a lot more years on it if you use it to wait for the...
Well, because they, they idle a lot, and yeah, I get that, so...
An Explorer, that, that used to be a police vehicle also. It's just kinda nice if you have the vehicle, it's paid for, just keep it in rotation, but it's really not, we're gonna make much on it, on it.
Okay.
I'd make a motion to go with your plan for the city vehicles.
Second.
First and a second, um, any further discussion or questions? Go to vote.
Teigs.
Aye.
Shones.
Aye.
Tau.
Aye.
Peterson. Mayor Dimmers.
Aye, so motion to follow Shane's vehicle plan passes. Gambling permit, Tracy Fireman's Relief Association. I see Dale stepping up to the...
Dale's gonna cover this one.
Uh, just our annual license for a raffle is what's laying in front of you. And then after you decide on that, or I guess while I'm up here in the last week, I've actually had two local businesses that have asked if we would be willing to do pull tabs. Done a little bit of research on it, I guess I don't wanna dig in too much unless I know there's support from here, I don't wanna waste any time on it. Looks like it could generate a decent amount of money on an annual basis. Obviously comes with some headache. For us, it'd probably be simpler just to hire a gambling manager to handle that headache so that none of us have to. But even with that being said, there should still be some revenue involved in it. Obviously, we'd try it for a year, if it worked, it worked, if it didn't, it, we, and stop doing it.
But you would be, um, the one responsible to manage it?
Technically, yes. Technically, it would be through the Relief Association, but we are, you know, there is that gray area between the Relief Association and the city, and it does reflect the city, so just, I guess, throwing it out there.
You got somebody in mind to be your manager?
I've had a couple people that have actually offered.
Have they been trained?
Yes.
Okay, that's a big thing.
Yeah.
Because that's ongoing training.
One of them's, one of them's very, very versed in it.
Okay.
Now, if you got somebody that's willing to do that, I think it's a good chance to try and pick up some revenue, so... I would make a motion to allow for a gambling permit for the Relief Association, their raffle.
Second then.
First and second, any questions or discussions? Go to vote.
Teigs.
Aye.
Shones.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Tau.
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers.
Aye. Gambling permit, Tracy Fireman's Relief Association passes. As for the pull tabs...
Let me get all the information, I just was more or less looking for a, that's not a good idea, don't waste your time, because we're gonna shoot it down, or we'd be willing to listen to what the options are.
I think that's where we're at, we'd be willing to listen.
As long as you got a good manager, it should be no problem.
Training's there.
Not gonna turn down free money?
Nope.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, hazardous properties, 220 and 236, Third Street.
So this boils down to, um, obviously, it's obviously lengthy. There's some, uh, we, we've received a complaint, and it's a legitimate complaint, as you can see, on my findings there, um, attached. on my findings there attached.
Can you throw that up on the screen, please?
What, are you looking for the pictures?
Yep. So the folks at home can see what we're talking about.
Pictures must not get uploaded.
I was going to say, I didn't have any pictures. I didn't see any pictures.
I got pictures. Hold it up here. I thought they were attached to the resolution, but maybe not. I can kind of explain while I'm looking here. There's actually some, it appears to be mold or moss growth on the floor inside the building, and the smell is actually seeping in to a neighboring building, which is what the complaint is. And you can actually walk by it and see, there's some, through the front window, you can see that it's definitely a problem that exists.
How about the old super value building?
Correct, yep.
Natalie, we got complaints from the dentist's office next door, but also the, from the person who owns the building also, the dentist's office.
I actually have the complaint on that one. These aren't terrible, but. I know my wires aren't wrong. Let's see if I can. So here's, here's a picture of the hole in the roof. It's been there a while. She went up in the basket and took some pictures. Obviously, these aren't all of them, but obviously there's graffiti on it. That's been on there for over a year. It actually got, I sent a compliance order over a year ago, I believe, and no response there. But if you can see that green, that's not carpet. That's actually what's growing in there.
Picture doesn't do it justice because it's all six inches high and some business.
I can probably pull up a better one. This is what I sent to Matt, just as the high points, but-
So what you're asking is for council to declare it as a hazardous building?
Correct, yep.
I think we get the idea, yeah. Now that's at, is that 236 or 220, or is it both?
Actually, both. It's the same, it's the same building, but two are-
It's two different, okay, got it.
And then it goes through the process that-
Similar to the-
Like we do with the Anderson Building.
What the Anderson Building did. It's sinking upside down.
Local owner?
There's a-
Local owner?
Graphic picture, I guess. There you go. This is looking through the front window.
That's not carpet.
That's, that's, that's not grassy. So obviously, you notice I've taken quite a few pictures of it, and it's-
So this will allow us to gain entry to this building?
Not entry. What this does is giving the, the owner of the property, the owners in this case, 30 days to correct the issues listed in that resolution that Matt had drafted based on the information I have given him. And then if they don't comply after that, it'd be similar to what they did at the Anderson Building, which is also on the agenda. They have 30 days, and after 30 days they don't comply, I think there's another 20-day notice, I think that falls in there, then there's a judgment. After the judgment, judge decides whether we can tear it down or go on and make the repairs, or whatever we want, decide we want to do with the building.
But if this is a case of health?
Yeah, and I don't know.
Do, I mean, if that's-
I've got the neighboring owners over there, they want to chime in, I guess you're right about that.
I'll say something about it since I'm-
Could I have you come up to their podium, please?
I'm John Heeson, I'm the dentist that is occupying the building right next to these two facilities that we're talking about. And the issue that we are having is that for mostly me and some of my staff, is that I have allergies to black mold. And so I quit my previous profession because of these allergies. And now what I'm finding is that when I'm at the clinic, there is so mu, so many airborne contaminants that I'm having a hard time in breathing. I keep, I'm always having to take Zertec just about every day now. When I go on vacation, in two or three days it clears up, and then as soon as I get back, it's the same thing again. So last week I was gone on vacation. I got back this morning by 10 o'clock and just having a hard time breathing, eyes watering. It's, you know, it's really an issue. It's been getting a little bit worse and a little bit worse all the time. Couple of my employees have stated the same thing, that geez, we get back from work after vacation and we just feel like crap. And the problem is that the indoor air is so poor that it's become a health issue. We, you know, and that building used to have a cat in the building, and people complained about that because they thought it was cruel. The issue, so the cat got taken out, which is okay, it probably is not a good spot for the cat to be, but the issue is now that we have rodents. So before that, we never had any rodents. Now we have the pest control there every week taking care of the rodents. So it's really an issue. It's, it needs to be done just absolutely as soon as possible, you know, this-
That's where I was kind of going, is I don't think that we want to wait 50 days here.
Well, if it waits 50 days, and then it, and then it's, you know, it'll be, it'll be six months before anything gets done with it. You know, it's, it's at the point where I'm, if it doesn't get done shortly, I'm going to move. I just can't take being in a business where I get complaints from my patients, I get complaints from my staff, and I'm not feeling well being there. So it's, it's really a severe issue.
Isn't there something we can do immediately on a public health hazard that-
Not really, we're-
Because it's a sanitary also with the rodent fishing?
We're moving in the right directions with the 30-day notice to them, and then, then we can correct something after that notice is gone through, based on the judgment from the district court. So it just has to follow that.
It's got to go through the courts, that's the problem.
At least it's, this one is clear than the Anderson Building as far as the ownership of it, so it shouldn't drag out.
I mean, I would expect it to go right away, but there's got to be something we can do in the event of public health.
It gets sticky when it's not, when it's a private property.
Um.
Been my, my, it's Nicole.
Well, I'm Nicole Larsen. I am co-owner of the building. K and R Properties actually owns the building that Mr. Heeson occupies with his business. And I know in speaking with John on several occasions, he has reached out multiple times to the owners to just silence in response regarding these issues. So it's not like he hasn't attempted to do something to try to get them to do and address it. The graffiti you saw is not more than a year old, it's probably more than four years old that's been down there, and it has been requested to be, just a little paint to cover it up, you know. That was quite some time ago that that was all done down there. The only reason there's not weeds on the building is my son came by with a weed whip and whipped them down. Otherwise, there's usually weeds and stuff down there as well. But there is, if you look in there, I mean, the black mold is as black as your shirt, Dave. It's, it's just, it is a serious health concern. And I shouldn't, we shouldn't be worrying about losing not only myself, a tenant, but the community, a wonderful business because of a very serious health issue. Nor should he have to worry about losing patients because of health issues as they look through the window of the door of the building right next that they're parking in front of to walk into his business. So it just, you know, when you, when you own a building, you need to take care of it. And this needs to be taken care of.
Well, can we make the motion to go ahead, you know, with the legal steps? Then could you contact the Department of Health and see if there's anything we could do that route? I mean, legally, I think we're kind of stuck.
Right.
I would like to make every effort possible to expedite this.
You know, I don't know if there's anything we could do with the, or if the Department of Health could intervene.
Well, and I know John and myself, on behalf of K and R Properties and I have his, we have the issue, you know, giving letters to Shane and to Jeff so that they have those in part of their arsenal and stuff like that. But, and yeah, the pictures don't do it justice, unfortunately.
You know, I, I don't know if the Department of Health would be an option. I mean, that's-
It wouldn't hurt. You need to start the legal process first, and that department wouldn't hurt at all. But we need to reach out too with our demo loan program and see if that motivates them to do something with the building and-
Contact the Department of Health.
Yeah, we need to, let's do everything we can do to expedite the process, but we'll initiate what we can right now.
And we appreciate everything you guys are doing to try to help move that along, so. Thank you.
So we need a motion then? Is that what we're looking at?
I'd make a motion and approve Resolution 201947, raising and repair of hazardous building.
I'll second it.
First and second, any further discussion or questions? Let's go to vote.
Teigs.
Aye.
Tal.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers.
Aye. Resolution 201947, order of raising or repair of hazardous building at 220 and 236 Third Street is approved. Hazardous property 157 Third Street.
So this is the Anderson Building. I guess at this point we need to decide what we want to do with it. If we want to raise the building or repair the building, I guess my recommendation would be to raise the building. Structural repairs in the roof would far outweigh the value of the building in its current state. I guess it's just up, up for the council's approval on what they want to do moving forward here with that building. I see more boards fell off it in the last few days.
Was there some discussion at the EDA about giving it a time with the sign in the window, or?
That's for the other building.
That was for the other one? Okay.
There was a warranty on that roof that expires on the 15th of this month. I don't know, Christmas was checking to see if they could do anything with it, but it hadn't been.
On the Anderson Building?
Yeah. I gave them the information on when the roof was replaced and how much warranty was on it, and he was supposed to get back with me as to what he found out. So.
You got to do this?
But.
I just want to echo Shane, as the time we spent in there, I don't think the cost of trying to repair that is worth it. I very much don't like seeing buildings come down in downtown Tracy, but there's a lot of dollars just to put that thing structurally sound, and then to remove all the stuff that needs to be removed from there properly, just to get it back to where you could make it into something. I just don't see the, the value of that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dale.
So is the question that we would either put the cost on, I'm trying to find it here, put the cost as a special assessment, or?
I would, I would go with the route of a judgment.
Mm-hmm.
Because assessment, they can just put pay in the taxes and go and get it back. Where judgment would actually require the first, bring first national acceptance to pay for the, the demo of the building, or at least seek judgment against them for it, which I think has a lot more power than just assessing the taxes.
Okay. There's absolutely no saving it, or... I, I'm with you guys. I don't want to, you know, if we can prevent losing buildings downtown, we should probably do everything we can to do that, but if, if it needs done, then it needs done. I mean-
I'll make a motion that we move ahead with demolishing the property at 157 Third Street and doing the judgment option for the cost of it.
I'll second.
First and second, any further discussion or questions?
So I will, moving forward here, I will reach out and get some bits for removal of that, and that'll be up for-
And we'll revisit it.
Yeah, revisiting.
Okay.
Moving forward from there, so.
Let's go to vote.
Tony. Peterson.
Aye.
Teigs.
Aye. Jeez.
Jones.
Aye.
Tal.
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers.
Aye. Hazardous property at 157 Third Street, we will move forward and pursue raising under TDC land offer.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Jim Coyle, President, Tracy Development. Tonight, Dale and I are here representing Tracy Development to talk about the land offer. But prior to that, it's very infrequently that we get to come here and speak, and I'd like to. Maybe some literature.
You know, you can come in and visit anytime you want.
I'll do that.
Oh, don't give him that.
There's no charge. And for many of you, I think you're well acquainted with our purpose and mission. And it's very simple, I guess. We just want to retain and create jobs in the community, and we want to see an enlarged tax base. And with that, we're hopeful that we can see some economic vitality that comes to our community. Very simple. And you have a group of volunteers. We started less than two years ago. Currently, we have over 36 people that have given anywhere from $100 to $5,000. And some of the people don't even live in town. There's some families that have given $2,000. They don't live here any longer, and they feel that the community should grow, and by contributing to a group like this, it will help it. Our group meets every Wednesday religiously, and we spend a lot of time on locating things that might add jobs. And as you probably know, we've been fortunate on two pieces of property. One we'll talk about tonight more specifically, and that's the BT Quality Construction they'll be occupying, hopefully. They put an offer on a building in the back of the Red Rooster property, that small building. And as you know, chasing our tails, Steve Trackenberg is also going to be purchasing the Dairy Queen. And so we're fortunate to have Jeff spend time with our group. We work hand in hand with the EDA. It's very critical that we have this kind of relationship, and we thank you. And we're very fortunate, I think, for these two businesses, and we've spent an enormous amount of time with, with people that are candidates for the development of the Red Rooster building. And we brought a couple to the table, one of them backed out the night of a meeting here. And there would be significant improvements to that property. We're talking millions. And we continue to work on it very hard, Jeff and the rest of us in our group. But in addition to that, we're also working on other properties and people that are looking at the community, as things we don't talk about openly until hopefully we can get them signed and committed to our community. So those are the things we're working on currently, and I think as a positive, Steve Trackenberg, where you see the end results, he's going to have about five or six people, or five or six children coming to town that'll add to our school system, and every one of those is about a $10,000 bill, which is pretty nice. So tonight, Dale is Vice President of our group, and we're here to talk about our offering and proposal for easement that now exists, and how we would propose that we work together to change this for the benefit of all parties, so. Dale?
So what we're here today proposing is in the purchase of the Red Rooster, this actually used to be a little L-shaped in the back-
this actually used to be a little L-shaped, and the back shed that Jim was just referring to was actually not in the city limits. The TDC got that all changed around. It's in the city limits. It's on the city tax basis. And like he said, we now have a young construction company looking to expand. They'd like to have this as their shop. So, in the process of doing this, this chunk of land in red, there is a 14-foot easement currently right now in this chunk of land that for Public Works to use and what used to be the Red Rooster. In conversation of how to get, still be able to use this for the future gas station development or whatever would go in this property, for them to be able to use it and for the city, you know, we would have had to redo the easement. So, the conversation was had with Chris and Shane and myself, discussed the value of the city owning that, and I'll let Shane go into reasons why the city would own that. And the TDC came up with if we could get $5,000 for the chunk of land and split the surveying costs and closing costs, we would like to see the city own that and then have access or have, everyone would have access to it, but the city would actually own it if they ever needed to do anything to get to the water treatment facility or anything like that. I guess with that, it's...
Dale, there's another provision that's scary for the city that the easement holder, if it becomes an impediment to them doing business, they can cancel the easement. So, if we're to sell the property and that easement goes along with the sale, you're really in jeopardy a little bit to having access if it interferes with their business.
Which falls back in line of why the conversation was initiated, that it'd just be in the city's best interest to acquire the 20 feet, and it's kind of hard to see on this picture for any of the drive-by. You would already think it's city property because it's all concrete all the way to the back. I do think your square would go back all the way to the tree line though.
That's, and that's what I was going to bring up here in discussion is, you know, and initially when we talked, we were squaring it off all the way back to the, to that field.
Yep.
Which would be actually, actually I have another picture here.
So, I think if you go look out there...
Similar to this.
Similar to this, yep.
Apparently, my session expired, though.
There you go.
I added it up.
That's the new development.
We're working on it.
Recovered.
So, it actually, it's the width of the concrete here, all the way back to the tree line. What it allows us to do is it allows us to plot off a section, resurvey a section for the construction company to operate out of. Gives the city the full access to everything that they would ever do behind the city shop, and then how we would determine, how the city would determine whether there's going to be an easement to allow access to the gas station and to the back building, whether it become a street or an alley or whatever direction the council would go in that direction as far as giving everybody use of it, but it would guarantee that the city would always have it, and like I say, when you drive by there, it's, you would think it is actually part of the city, the city shop right now. But I believe when we looked, Shane, is it four feet you have along the building?
I think it was six.
Six feet currently is all there is right along the building there.
I think it was, easement was 14, which made the concrete 20.
Yep. So, it was six and...
14.
Yep. So, that's our proposal tonight is $5,000 for a chunk of land and split the cost of the surveying and the closing.
How did we arrive at the $5,000?
What was the number that the TDC board came up with?
Pretty commonly used number.
We wanted to be very fair.
We did, um...
Pardon?
We looked at it as very fair a price, I guess. We didn't spend an enormous amount of time assessing it, but it's putting you in jeopardy if someone else comes along and says, "We can't let you use that any longer." And we're just, we thought it's in our best interest to bring it to your attention now and give the opportunity to get a plot and protect yourself.
No, I wasn't trying to be negative. I just was wondering how we arrived at that number because we hear it a lot, so I was just wondering.
Obviously, the original conversation started out somewhere in the neighborhood of, you know, $8,000 to $10,000, and the board decided just to go $5,000 and, and put it in the city's hand, which is, which is the best place for it to be because the property line on the, would be the east side of the city shop, the building is right on, correct?
On the east side?
Yes.
Midwest side, we have a little bit there. It is...
But that access road is Midwest, not actually city land, so... There is really no eight-foot road to get to behind the city shop that the city owns.
You guys got a timeline, Dale, when you want this done by or...
Sooner than later because...
Again, coming up with, I'm budgeting, this will be another unbudgeted expense.
Honestly, the reason for sooner would be it only makes sense to use the same surveyor to plot all this as to plot all that and try to tie it in as one to save everybody some money. Obviously, our half of this parcel to you and our full amount that we have to pay for surveying that back one, if we could bring one surveyor in and do them together, separate projects, but tie them together, it obviously saves some expense to us and to the city. As far as the actual closing of it, I don't think there is a real timeframe. Obviously, there's nothing immediately happening at the Red Rooster site, so I would feel comfortable along the lines, if it's something you want to do, and I guess maybe I'll speak out of turn, Jim, as long as you agree to the surveying shared costs prior. If we wanted to budget it into January 1st, we could wait till January for a check for the land. We kicked around a number guessing approximately without surveying when B was...
We figured 1,500 at the most, but...
1,500 at the most, so we split that down the middle, and even if, I mean, say $2,000, it's $1,000 each, and we can do the closing on January 10th or whenever. If we know you're interested in it, we're obviously not going to sell it out from underneath you.
I was just curious, how your guys' cash flow is going more than anything, so...
We're a nonprofit. There's no... We're a nonprofit.
Sooner rather than later is what you mean.
Have you ever heard of borrowing your prosperity?
Yeah.
Prosperity. We're working on it, right?
That's why I encourage everybody to give a donation. I mean, I have done it, so...
Fortunately, we're starting to sell some of the buildings we've acquired, but there are some additional costs in, you know, like the Swift building, we're going to be having to do something with removing that and... Yeah. Funds are, funds are always tight, but again, I don't see what three months is going to do us.
I think it's a good idea myself. I think we need to get that piece in our hands so we've got a way to get in and to get out of our building without depending upon neighbors. So, it's, and I don't know, as an unfunded expenses, if it's a big thing, it's just another resolution. I just thought I'd throw it out there to see.
Probably something you'd want to run under utilities, utility budget.
Yeah, so it'd give you time to figure out. I would make a motion to accept TDC's offer of the $5,000 and split the surveying costs.
But roll it into the budget for...
Well, I would, I would see where we're at as far as, you know, budget-wise. Not pick a closing date or anything yet, but commit to the, the surveying out of utilities.
Leave us the option.
Yeah, I'm not sure how our maintenance budget's looking. I mean, if it's doing all right, you know...
Close earlier, otherwise wait till January.
Reserve the option.
You just need the approval now so you can go ahead with the surveying and that, correct?
Yeah, I mean, we'll work with Shane.
We can figure out how to pay for it after we get surveyed and pick a closing date.
We'll work with Shane and figure out, you know, who we want to use for the survey company and get them on board, so get the process started at least.
So, the motion we really need is to agree to split.
Well, agree to purchase.
I'll second Tony's.
Yeah, it was to agree to purchase and to split the cost of survey and to close at a date somewhere.
TBD date. First and second, any further discussion?
Just, Jeff, do you remember what, what did it cost us to survey those lots out in?
$750. So, and that was to split it into four parcels and then, and then six lots in each one of the parcels, so...
Just for information, so...
Commercial's usually more, but it's usually double, but maybe they'll give us... I do know the surveyor they used last time. I think when Karen owned the Rooster, they had a surveyor from Marshall come in and, you know, but you tell, and then, you know, maybe he has information that'll help us save too, so, hopefully.
Okay, go to vote.
Tal.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Teigs.
I think I...
Mayor Dimmers.
Aye. To be clear, the motion to accept TDC land offer, split surveying costs, and... Close at a later date. That passed.
As for, you're explaining the closing costs, including...
Right, all the costs.
Okay, the right closing.
Correct. That was part of the offer. We're just reserving closing at a later date for budgetary purposes. Okay?
Thank you guys very much.
In conclusion, we hope to get you a lot more than $5,000 on taxes.
There you go.
We're working on it, too.
I reckon that building is, is doing that, so...
Yeah, thank you. That's awesome. Airport farm lease.
All right, so on, here it is now. Screen back. So, around the airport, there's some farmland that we have leased to Dan Lou in the past, and the agreement is up for renewal. There was some changes. When they did the solar farm, they kind of took all that land away, and then now the solar farm don't need it all, so we sprayed the weeds for two years, and now he's now again farming it. And then there was some that was taken away on the corner by where they put the spoils from the ponds. So, that was lost, so they changed all the acreage numbers to jive with what he's actually farming. And it's up for approval. I did find one mistake on the very end of the agreement, but I talked to Diane here and she, that she make those corrections on the signatures, signature page, three pages of the agreement. I guess moving forward, uh...
It's basically just the same agreement that's done before, just changing dollars.
Yep.
Approval for the renewal of the farm lease is what we're looking for here.
And what are the dollar changes?
Call it down, so...
Acre joint 4110, the like, 07 or something.
Okay.
I'd make a motion to approve the farm lease with the Lou and New family.
Discussion or questions? Move to vote?
Tal.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Teigs.
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers.
Aye. So... Airport farm lease is, renewal is approved. Allegations of misconduct of EDA board member Anthony Peterson. What do we have on that, Shane?
I don't, I guess there's a memo in agenda packet. It's similar to the one with Jeff Solomon. At this point, it's up for vote on whether they should have a hearing, similar to what they did with the last misconduct allegation. For council discussion. I don't know if you want me to go into detail or not.
I would just ask everybody in the council on the second page to read paragraph, the double asterisk paragraph from Mr. Gross.
I guess my, my question is, okay, we've read, and I'm saying I'm not going to get into specifics because that's not fair to anybody right now. My, my brain just went away. Where was I just going? Oh, gosh. Well, I'll just start, start over in my thoughts. Hopefully, it'll come to me. That, right now, we have not heard your side of anything.
That's true.
But in order for us to be able to hear your side of it, we have to go to a hearing.
Not necessarily. All you got to do is ask me.
And then you can decide if it's something you want to talk in public, because this would be...
Yeah, I want, trust me, I want it all out in the public.
But the public has to give a notice, and that's where this comes in. We need to decide. None of this has been substantiated yet, so that's a decision. Do we need to have a hearing to decide whether it is substantiated or not? And that would be a public hearing, which would require that Mr. Peterson get all evidence against him 10 days prior at a minimum, and the public needs to be given notice and have the opportunity to end and speak. So, we're not really, the only decision we're looking at right now that we're tasked with is, do we need to schedule a hearing to hear all the evidence in this particular instance? And it provides Mr. Peterson the opportunity to, to present his side of it and his...
It'll be a matter of public record if you ask me any question tonight that you want to ask me. And if you're going to go back to saying you want to do a hearing like you did for Mr. Solomon, no one from the public was able to stand up and talk to Mr. Solomon or ask him questions or, and why would mine be any different than his? So, I'm kind of tight. I find this another huge waste of money from our attorney. Another hearing is a huge waste of money for the taxpayers. If you truly think or, and seriously want to know what I did and why I did it and what I used for justification, ask me, and I'll be bluntly honest with you.
That would be the purpose of the hearing because it's pursuant with Minnesota State statute.
And I will say again, that's the same thing Chris told you before we went to the hearing. It is your council. You decide what you want. Don't put it in the hands of the lawyers. I'll go a step further. What I tried to say while you guys were deliberating on the night of the 24th was quite simply this. I've been doing this a little longer than you guys have. I went to training a lot earlier than you guys had. When I went to training, there was none of this, can't talk to another council member. You just can't have a quorum, and you can't make decisions. There was none of this, be afraid to talk to somebody or be seen as social. You have to understand that the League of Minnesota Cities provides our liability insurance. So, they, as, and they're a bunch of attorneys, and they are going to advise you to err on to the side of caution and not put yourself in any risk or try to expose yourself. I operate under the assumption... I operate under the assumption that what I do, I do with the best interest of the city, based on my judgment and my experience, and I don't know if I have to be narrowed down to them rules of declaring a conflict when it's blatantly obvious what one is, and declaring a conflict when it really doesn't, one doesn't exist, and I'll use Jerry's example, issues with Sanford, right now, the only issue we have with Sanford is we are the keeper of their million dollar pot, it is their money, it doesn't make any difference whether you're an employee of them or not, we've already given them money, we just haven't given it to them all at once, so where's the conflict? That, that deal was struck long before you came on the council. If I was sitting in your shoes, I would've said I have no conflict, it's not going to affect my paycheck, Dave, the same thing, that you do what you want based on your conscience, but as, as someone who is, you work for wages and commission, you really think that you're going to make any more commission at this liquor store where you have to declare conflict interest?
No.
We're all adults in this room. We need to stop this pettiness and talk to each other, no one reached out and talked to me, no one. I make a complaint against Denny, no, an email isn't talking to me, telephones are talking to me. An email was sent out after I made allegations for Denny for every member of the EDA board to say, well, what's your side of this? Where was my email sent out, where was Jeff's chance to answer all this stuff before it escalated to this point? So, yeah, I'll answer anything you want right now, you can ask me anything, you may not like the answer, but you can ask me anything.
I'm not afraid of not liking the answer, I'm more afraid of you not liking the question that I might ask.
Well, I'm not afraid of that either, trust me, I've been asked, I've had people come in for the last two weeks to ask me questions.
Also a question of proper procedure, and by not following proper procedure, we leave ourselves open.
You know, I just wrestle with this whole thing, I do. Geez, we never had hearings, I mean, I've lived in Tracy for...
You used to argue about garbage.
Sidewalks.
Hours on end.
The, the, these hearings, I mean, I just...
The bottom line is, they protect us and Mr. Peterson.
I, I understand that, and the, the thing that I'm struggling with is, okay, we, we set a precedence because of having the hearing with Mr. Solomon, that now I'm afraid if we treat yours any differently, are we going to get bit in the butt with that one? That's what, what I'm struggling with 20, I agree, the number, the number one violation with the Fair Credit Reporting Act, I would never bring that one forward, because we found it was not substantiated with Mr. Solomon, so it's not going to be substantiated with you.
All about our public record, though.
So, I mean, I, I would not bring that forward. The other two violations, you know, I looked back at what we used to decide on...
This is not the hearing.
No, I, I know it's...
So, when, when you say, well, if we don't do it the same way that we did with Mr. Solomon, well, we did, we followed procedure and statute for Mr. Solomon, why would we do it any different for Mr. Peterson?
Probably wouldn't.
Because what's there maybe isn't substantiated anywhere along the line, because it all stems from the Fair Credit report that we said wasn't, wasn't violated.
Yeah, but number two and three.
But if the Fair Credit isn't, Fair Credit, the other two don't fall in the line, because what are you basing it off then?
I wish I had a copy of the code in front of me, because there is, that does say in that city code that investigating is a council responsibility, and what I did was investigating as a member of the...
We're getting, we're getting into the, the merits of the case that would be heard at the hearing, the question before us is, do we schedule a hearing to hear all testimony and see all evidence, or do we not? This is not the time to argue the merits of the case.
Well, I'll make a motion to not proceed with it, to proceed with any investigation for misconduct.
Is there a second? There is no second. So I'll make a motion that we set a date for a hearing to hear all evidence and testimony in regards to this matter. Is there a second?
I'll second it, because I feel like I, we need to go down the same path that we, we chose with Mr. Solomon, I, I think we have to follow the same path.
First and second, any further discussion, questions? Let's roll the vote.
Teigs?
No.
Tal?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Dimmers?
Yes. Do we need to set a hearing date? The motion to set a hearing date to hear all evidence and testimony in regards to the allegations against EDA board member Anthony Peterson.
Last time it was done on a Wednesday, I don't know, 21st?
I don't know days.
Oh wait, 28th, I'm sorry.
It's the 28th acceptable by all parties. Tony?
28?
Yep.
You said it, I got to show up. I've got no choice in the matter.
All right, so August 28th then? 6:30 normal. Resolution 201946 for the censure and suspension of Councilman Tony Peterson.
That was from when it was the other hearing?
Yep.
Before the other hearing?
Yeah.
I'll move for approval of resolution 2019 slash dash 46.
Let's look it. First and second, any discussion or questions?
This is for the old one, we're saying?
Yes. Should we vote?
Teigs?
No.
Uh, Tal?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Uh... Mayor Dimmers?
Yes. Resolution 201946, the censure and suspension of Councilmember Tony Peterson is approved. We did 201947. Resolution 201948, accepting Chris Ambul's resignation and appointing Shane Daniels interim administrator.
Vote approved.
Second.
First and second, questions or discussion?
I do want, under disc, well, I guess I just want to take a moment, because we didn't do it at our last council meeting, when he was here in person, and I don't know if he'll watch this recording or something, but, um, I'd like to thank him for the job he did do this year, little over a year that he was here, you know, he jumped right in with the flood, no pun intended, he jumped into his waist with, with stuff, and I think he was very instrumental with what we are going to be receiving from FEMA and everything, so I think, you know, that's just one of the many things that he did do in the year of his 10 years, so I do want to thank him and wish him well with his family, that he can be closer to them, can't deny him wanting to be closer to his family.
Agreed. First and second, any discussion or questions?
Oh, and thank you, Sean, for your...
Wait till you...
Let's go to vote.
Teigs?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Dimmers?
Yes.
Resolution 201948, accepting Chris Ambul's resignation and appointing Shane Daniels interim administrator is approved. Resolution 201949, removing Jeff Solomon from EDA Board of Tracy, Minnesota.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 201949 to remove Jeff Solomon from the EDA.
I'll second.
First and second, discussion or questions? Go to vote.
Tal?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Teigs?
No.
And Dimmers?
Yes.
And I don't know if this is the time, but I just want to make it clear that through all this, it has not been a choice between Jamie Mattson and Jeff Solomon, it, it was totally based on, on facts and everything, you know, we, we took the people out of it, and I think a lot of people out in the community think we were choosing sides, and we chose a, a new person in town over a longevity, multi-generational family, and I can say from the bottom of my heart, that was not it, that I had to take the people out of it, and I really truly want the community to start realizing that, that we are looking at facts, we are not looking at people, and that's why these decisions are so hard, because we have to take the people out of it, and so I want the people in this community to start bringing back together and start focusing on the positives, because we have way too many positives going on to allow these occasional bumps here to really stonewall it, we need to keep moving down, but, you know, all the stuff on multimedia things and all that, if people truly want the best for Tracy, we need to cut that off. Don't put negatives out there about this community, if you have negatives, come up here, stand here, talk to us, so maybe we can do something about it, don't be splashing things on Facebook or anything like that, get up here and talk to us, or better yet, next fall, put your name on the ballot, because we're going to have a lot of openings for City Council next, next year, so get your name on the ballot so you can be part of the solution, and not just part of the problem. So that being said, thank you.
And that being said, the resolution 2019 dash 49, removing Jeff Solomon from the EDA Board of Tracy, Minnesota, is carried. We did the 201950, and we, for clarity, we've tabled 201951 and 201953 till, um, I would assume next meeting, till they get their numbers right?
Yes, that was the part that was addressed at the beginning of the meeting.
Yep.
Meanwhile, here, 10A, the infrastructure loan closure, so the 10, or the 19C bond, which is resolution 2019 dash 54, and then 55?
Yes.
Those two, those two resolutions on I and J, under 12I and 12J, are actually coincided with 10A.
Okay. But we need to approve those resolutions for official approval, right?
Yep, so they'll be closing the temporary bonds, um, on 10A, that we skipped, um, the 2016C and 2017A bonds for the infrastructure, will become the 2019C and then 2019D bonds, um, and, and that, those two bonds that are listed in resolutions 54 and 55 are actually the 40-year bonds for the wastewater project phase one.
And that is from after the grant money is exhausted, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
That'd be our loan, our loan portion that we...
Right, so then, we don't need a motion for 10A, but we do need to approve?
The two resolutions.
The two resolutions. Okay, and 59, or 59, 201952 has also been approved already, so I need a motion on resolution 201954? And can we do them both at the same time, 201955?
Should have separate ones.
Should have separate, okay, very good.
Make a motion to approve 201954, the 19C bond.
First and second, discussion or questions? Vote?
Jones?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Teigs?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. Resolution 201954, Tracy, rural development water sewer storm, 19C bond is approved.
Motion to approve 1955, the 19D bond.
Second it.
First and second, discussion. Vote?
Teigs?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. Resolution 201955, Tracy, rural development sewer, 19D bond is approved. Okay, we're getting, we're in a familiar territory here. Municipal accounts payable, without breakthrough beverage, and Sanford Health.
Make a motion to approve the consent calendar, without breakthrough, Sanford Health, planning commission units, library board minutes, and the airport board minutes.
First and second, discussion or questions? Vote?
Teigs?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. So that approves without breakthrough beverage in Sanford Health, planning commission meetings, library board meetings, airport board, board meetings, minute. Breakthrough beverage?
Make a motion to approve.
First and second, discussion. Go to vote.
Peterson?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. Without breakthrough beverage is approved. Anything, anybody have anything for Mayor or Council Communications?
Make a motion to approve payment to Sanford Health.
Second.
Oh, I thought we got that one, all right, thank you for catching that. Any questions? Vote?
Teigs?
Yo.
Peterson?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Dimmers?
Aye. So Sanford Health is approved. Now, Mayor, Council Communications, anybody got anything?
I have a couple points I'd like to make. Last week's Headlight Herald, you had an article in there, Mr. Mayor, and I'll read you a couple quotes, and I want you to let me know if you agree with these or not, it's the first quote was, I've got, is, it's just a matter of holding folks accountable for their actions, you agree with that, how you feel, and what, that's, the second one is, we have a responsibility to the people in town, we have a responsibility to follow and enforce statutes and city codes, and if we don't enforce them, there isn't any point in having them.
Okay.
Agree with that?
Yep.
A lot of the complaints, a lot of the allegations that was made against Mr. Solomon and myself, centered around the code of conduct, which follows back to some of the city 2.3, 2.4, I spelled it all out in the complaint that I made. And the big ones that I took out of there... And the big ones that I took out of there, um, treat people with respect, respecting their ideas and opinions. Treat one another with dignity and respect, both during meetings as well as outside of meetings. Be patient when listening to others and speak, and not to interrupt. Don't make threats or rude comments to other members. Be open to feedback. Make decisions based on what's best for the city, not to take advantage of your position on, on the committee in any way. Declare any conflicts as they arise, and represent the city in a professional manner. I don't know, the three new members of the council, if you're aware of that being out there, but it came from Resolution Number 2017 dash 90. And that has been used extensively, and you agree that's a good policy to operate under and to live by? Do I have, yep?
I guess right now it's what we have, so we have to live by it. It's the conduct you each signed.
So, my question is, using this as a, as a form of conduct, is it in good conduct and good faith of this agreement for a department head and a board chairman to sit and downgrade and degenerate a sitting council member during a council meeting?
Probably not.
No, I, I have to agree with that.
Yeah.
It happens on a regular basis. Is it permissible behavior for a board chairman and a council member to be discussing recall of a sitting council member at a local bar and tavern in earshot of people?
I know what you're getting at here.
No.
I know what you're getting at.
I'm not done yet. Let's go back to the interrupt thing.
Okay, then.
Is it permissible or good conduct for having a board chairman file a lawsuit, not once, but twice, against a city council member?
No.
Well...
Not finished yet, Mr. Mayor.
You asked a question, and I'm answering your question, Mr. Councilman.
I have already got a majority of the answers, so I'm, now I'm going to ask.
So, my opinion doesn't count now?
I didn't say that. You're, I didn't say that. It's my floor.
Well, I'm answering your question, sir.
Then he, if he's going to answer to that specific one, I think he, he should answer to that.
The things you're talking about, um, on the surface, and, and, you know, we agree in general terms, but there are specifics that apply to each one of these situations that you're talking about that you're not bringing to light or discussing. So, you're asking in general if it's appropriate, without knowing specifics of the instance, on the surface of it, no.
Okay, that's your opinion. I respect that.
Thank you for the time.
So, no, it's a memory question, because I sat here when we started talking about conflicts of interest and hearings and everything else, that you were going to open a can of worms that you didn't want dumped all over in the public. Do you now understand what I'm talking about?
I understand what you're talking about, Tony, but you know what? We're not the ones that totally opened that can of worms. There's been two sides to this all the time.
And as you said...
Our option was to have a hearing or not. Another option was for the person that the allegations were against to resign, to admit wrongdoing. There is, there was not that, that agreement or anything, so then we were forced to go that route. Is it a route that I wanted to go, Tony? I'm here to tell you right now, absolutely not. The last thing I wanted was the Tracy City Council meeting to become the most popular watched show on the second and fourth Monday evenings. You know, we don't get any revenue off of it, you know, so that's not what I wanted. I did not want it front page of the papers, but it's two-handed here. It's not just us, Tony. There's the other hand, too, that had options, and they chose the road that they were going to go down, and so then we chose the road we had to go down.
I, I see where you're coming from. I don't agree with it, but I, I see where your, where your point of view is. I, I, I feel that this whole situation could have been avoided had someone reached out and actually got face-to-face with Mr. Solomon when this first started and got it hammered out privately, without making phone calls, without threatening phone calls, without mirroring it across the paper with, okay, I'll call you back, and not call back, and you get a, a lawyer. This was not handled in a proper way whatsoever. And to call, call somebody and, and have him sign, because the initial complaint looked to me like somebody coached the individual as to what to write, there's, this is where it's getting this deal from the witcher. So, what I'm getting, I'm going to get to the end of my, my speech here and get this over with. So, my intent, and I want to let everybody on the council know, is to write a letter to the editor explaining my positions and my... So, you have time to gather your facts and read what I have to say as to what happened and why things happened and how they got out of control. But I'm not going to do it without letting you know first. I'm not going to go make an article in the paper using my position to quote somebody as, as having a cloud over their head as a member of a board was quoted in the paper. And I'm asking you, if this is good for one person, why isn't it good for everybody? Why, why are we allowing this to continue? And it happened tonight, again. I mean, as a citizen, they have that right. As a board chairman, I don't think they should be doing that. And that's my point. So, I will have it drafted for you. I promise I won't take as many columns as you used for the mayor's, unless you, as the council, decide you don't want me to do that. But I think this needs to get out for the public as quick as possible and get this over. The only way to get it behind you is to face it and be done with it. I'd waive my 10 days, but you're stuck on procedures, so I...
No, Tony, I don't think we can tell you not to write it. That is your right to write a, a letter to the editor. I just want this to stop, and I want you to think long and hard about if it's stopping it when you personally file an allegation then against another member. I mean, it's just going down a slippery slope. And Tony, right or wrong, I'm not saying, but you're pushing stuff down the slope, too, by bringing forward now another allegation.
Yes, I am. But if it's good enough for one person to go through, then I think all the players that had a hand in this should suffer the same fate. That's the difference. That's my mindset. That's, that's me, that, my military mind says, if that rule applies to this person and we can chastise him, then anybody else in that pool of candidates who committed similar behavior need to go through the same thing. That's why I'm not fighting this. I was, I would have been happy to answer your questions tonight and suffered whatever fate you'd put on me. I don't need all the fall for us, but I expect, I expect, because I filed a formal with references to specific chapters and verse, just like was done for Mr. Solomon, I want that individual to...
And it will, Tony, because it has been filed as a formal complaint. What I'm saying is, like you said, it could have been handled totally different at the very beginning.
Yeah.
So, you know what? Let's not continue down this, that if it, if you think it was handled incorrectly at the very beginning, let's not continue down this same negative pathway. Let's, as far as I'm concerned, let's do some better education of all the members on these committees and everything. Let's start with a clean slate, because we want people to agree to be on these committees, or we're going to be in a heck of a mess as a city if we have nobody that wants to be on the EDA board. Nobody wants to be on any of our boards.
I agree.
But we have to stop this downhill slide and start over saying, okay, we're not saying everybody's perfect. But now, let's educate people, let's look at our codes of conduct, see if those are what we want to live by and hold people accountable for and everything, and get everything cleaned up, and start with a clean slate, so people can feel confident to say, yeah, I want to be on the EDA board, because now all this is being straightened out. We're not going down this negative path where people are going to be afraid of being on a board because they might get their name splashed all over because they make a mistake.
I appreciate your response.
Am I allowed to mention one little thing? Thank you. I'm Mayor Peterson, owner of the paper. You've referenced the Headlight Herald a number of times, which is fine. I just want, on the record, to know that I approached the mayor for the story. He did not come seeking a pulpit or anything like that. I, I don't want anyone to get the impression that he came to me and said, ooh, I got to, you know, that was me asking for him, so...
I appreciate the clarification.
Thank you, Phil. You have anything further?
Nope, I'm done.
Anybody else want to add?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Get a vote.
Shones?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Teigs?
Aye.
Dimmers?
Aye. We are adjourned.